Selectman's meeting, December 1st. Calling to order at 7:00. Selectmen's meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. First on the agenda, the approval of the minutes July 28th. Open session and executive session. Are people ready to look through those?
Yep.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay, it's a motion to approve, second. Any discussion or comments?
No, but these are getting so far out, I couldn't remember anyway.
Me too.
I think Mary needs to get at least one set a week done. Or at least get the current ones done. And work on the back.
Right. Okay, I remembered it when I read it, but. Anyway, any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, I'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes of July 28th, 2014? Vote open and executive session, say aye.
Aye.
The next is we have an appointment of Marcia Johnson of Baker Road to the Pipeline Study Committee for a term to expire May 31st, 2015.
So moved to appoint Marcia.
Oh, second.
Any further comments or discussion?
Only a town. I had to tell what's going on now. They're talking about going through the hams with the big one. I wonder if that's going to affect the lateral and.
Oh, yeah.
The Bolton town manager called me today on it and, you know, I didn't have any answers. I don't know, but things are in a big flux right now.
They are?
But Marcia will do a good job.
And Sterling is now talking about getting gas. Did you see that?
Yeah.
So that would make more sense if they went like, say, down 190 if they're gonna.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Anyway.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote. All those in favor of appointment of Marcia?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I need to sign that?
Yes, you do, actually. Okay, we have the first installment of eighty six hundred fifty dollars to be paid in connection with the emergency services study. I take a motion to make payment.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, comments? Okay. Hearing none, I'll take a vote. All those in favor? Aye. We have a budget request for the Veterans Services. Is a relatively minor change. It's moving from eighteen thousand five hundred sixty-one to eighteen thousand seven sixty-five. The vast majority of that are Chapter 115 Veterans Benefits, that's fifteen thousand six hundred. That has remained level, so it's a two hundred and four dollar or roughly less than 1% increase overall.
Okay.
Done? I moved that we approved this. Judy?
I'm just taking a picture. So if yearly training is, he put in a hundred and thirty-five dollars, but he says in here that it gets reimbursed at 100%.
Reimbursed to the town.
I don't know, it just says he gets reimbursed. I don't know if you looked this over.
He didn't provide. I looked it over, Judy, but it doesn't.
I mean, it's a hundred and thirty-five dollars, but. Are we sharing him with someone?
Bolton.
Bolton. So. Now, to make the point of this, but Bolton should be, should be sharing some of this, right?
Some of what?
The training expenses.
He, he told me, but he didn't itemize for me, that he split some of the expenses, just in total. Some are Bolton's, some are Berlin, but I don't know.
Well, we could hold off and have him be specific on it.
You want that detail?
I mean, I know it's.
Forty-four dollars they decreased over last year, but if you want to.
Yeah, I mean, I just. If you could just ask him to detail how he splits stuff with Bolton.
Okay. Hold off and do that. Okay. All right, we have a couple of items to discuss with the, of the special town meeting war. Last week, Walter raised the issue of, I'm thinking it was an awful lot of money to go to the special town meeting in connection with the eighteen seventy Town Hall. And wanted us, I think to, I mean, it's on the war, I think.
Yeah.
I think wanted to discuss that particular article.
I understand that we're just looking for money for an architect plan, but it's gone from, I, I just think the amount of it deserves almost a public hearing, frankly, of exactly what are we looking for plans for? I don't know. I heard there's an elevator in a curatorial building. The first price that was floated around, which this was a year ago, was a hundred thousand and then, you know, a hundred and a quarter, and then it gets up to 200 and then 300. Then when we voted to put it on, I think it was up half a million, of which I bit my lip. But then you recall, I, I wanted to withdraw from supporting it. And now I'm hearing eight hundred thousand or thereabouts in the ballpark. And it's just, I think it deserves more input from a broader group of people on it. There's so many things, I don't know what, what is, are you on that committee?
Yes, and you were supposed to be coming to the two of the meetings I've been at, and you never showed up. There was one last week.
Really? I was supposed to be coming?
Yeah, they were waiting for you to show up, and then.
Oh.
We waited 15 minutes.
I didn't, I didn't.
You know, it's fifty thousand dollars, and for the fifty thousand dollars plus the other 35, you're going to get construction plans with an actual estimator who estimates what the real cost is. Right now, they're just doing a general square footage cost. Twenty, 25% of that is for the curatorial building, the cost of the whole project. And I think we figured out the cost of the plans. It's the same project that they have been doing since they came in and saw us the last time with all their plans. It's an elevator, and the elevator itself is now eighty thousand dollars. Just the physical elevator, not putting it in.
Mm-hmm.
And it's the parking and it's the curatorial. And I can't see putting it off because they have the whole thing planned out, so you can get these, these and get bids and see what you're actually going to be spending on.
Mm-hmm.
If you keep pushing it off and pushing it off, you're never going to know the actual cost. And I can guarantee you one thing, the price is going to keep going up.
Judy, it's just first, first, so you're talking a couple hundred thousand for a curatorial building.
That is currently what's in the plan.
And, all right, here's my position on that. There's a number of things up in the air right now. The Highway Department is looking for a new building. I don't know if we'd go for it or not. If they do and they leave the structure they're in, which is a historic building, it's got cement floor, that's a beautiful building. You could house five of Berlin's historical collection in that place.
You'd still have to condition it.
It wouldn't cost that much, the structure is there, and it wouldn't cost that much. We have the smallest historical collection around. And it doesn't need a two hundred thousand dollar building. We need more public, I think we need more public hearing of this before we just get up a town meeting and a bunch of well-meaning, good people again get up and be for it. And then some of us are put in the spot of being the bad guys. But I almost think frankly, Judy, that we might, might not be looking at a big enough picture. We should be considering what you just talked about. We should be looking at the highway barn, we should be looking at the old fire barn. There's a couple of rooms in this building that are underutilized.
It'll be at least three years before that town barn gets built.
Well, it's been 140 years since the Town Hall was built and hadn't had an elevator.
Yeah, well, we're, I feel that we're somewhat obligated to put an elevator in there and make it accessible for the people that are in this town. And it's been put off and put off. And you have, I think they said, more than 7,000 people using that building, and you would have more if it was handicapped accessible.
Well, first of all, I'm all for handicap access. And not putting in, spending 600,000 dollars to do it doesn't mean it could be done substantially less expensive. I know they say they've looked at it, but this is pretty grandiose and a substantial amount of money.
It's an elevator, Walter, it's not grandiose. It's an elevator that meets the standards that are in play today.
I, I think that there are other alternatives that haven't been adequately considered.
What alternatives are those?
Well, I'll, let's talk, open it up and hold off, and we'll discuss about it.
Well, I'm, I'm against taking.
There's anything from chair lifts to, to, there've been elevators put on other buildings much less than this, and I don't think.
Well, Walter, this has been around for ages. Why didn't you bring this up before?
I've been against, because it went from 400,000 to 800,000, that's one reason. That's one reason.
Well, I don't think we actually know that. I guess my feeling is that I, I would like to get this forward, get plans so we can actually price something. That there are opportunities, that's, it's, it's a project that we will then have a price and a location for a curatorial building. But that doesn't mean we actually have to put one there, that we will, though, actually have facts to deal with in terms of cost and, and design. And can compare that in the future against some other alternatives that are available. But I think getting a plan, nailing down facts at this point, is the thing to do. They are plans, and there are many decisions to be made between now and, and building. And I, I think we should move it forward on a planning basis because we can finally start to nail the gel to the wall in terms of the facts of actual costs and so on.
But as you know, I am against it. And with respect to a meeting I was supposed to show up, Judy, this is the first time I've heard about it. And in fact, a meeting before that. I know that there's been a group going on. They meet a lot, nobody's ever let me know when the dates were that they met. And I would have tried to attend one anyway, but I don't, I don't stick it like that. But I am against spending money at this particular time.
Yep, that's fair enough. All right, it is, and we can fix, we can, if there's something further, we have to get, we have to go back to the STM anyway, because we want to talk about the FinCom. So if there's any other things to say, we can certainly continue that in a minute. But at this point, we have a meeting to discuss the Berlin Auto Parts Class III Motor Vehicle License Renewal. I think we have the proponents here. This is, the, the note, the license is subject to a number of stipulations. Are people familiar with those?
You can read them out loud.
Why don't I read them out loud? The current stipulations are, the perimeter of the storage area shall not be increased, no more motor vehicle should be stored among the trees, and no trees should be cut. The approximate area is 12 acres. The easterly part of the present storage area shall be free of cars, and no motor vehicle body shall be stored within 200 feet of Coburn Road. Purpose of this condition is to keep the high ground visible from the west clear of car bodies. Parts of cut-up cars prepared for sale shall not be stored within 150 feet of Coburn Road. The perimeter of the junkyard shall be fenced in. The wooden structure along Coburn Road shall be sufficiently high to screen operation from the roadway. There'll be no burning on the property. The fence running perpendicular to the road on the northerly side of, of the operation is to be continued. I'm not 100% sure I know what that means. Number of vehicles to be displayed outside the fence shall be limited to 12. Hours of operation shall be from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Saturday. There shall be no idling of trucks for longer than five minutes in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 90, Section 16A. And all loading and unloading of vehicles shall be performed within the gates to Berlin Auto Parts and shall not take place in the driveway or roadway. Those are the current.
They all, those are current ones, right?
Those are the current stipulations, yep.
So do these match the junkyard, so they have two permits? The car one and the.
Scrap metal.
Scrap metal.
About there.
They're going, so.
Are the hours the same on these? 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday? 7:00 to 6:00 on, I mean, Monday through Friday and 7:00 to 6:00 p.m. on Saturday?
Mm-hmm.
Just trying to keep them in a plot. Did we talk about changing those hours? Or did we change them recently, didn't we?
Uh-huh. Were some holidays or something when they're added for that, or?
They, they were not. Mr. Cho asked for that, but he did not, that's not.
So the changes of hours are?
There, there is no change. That, that was before you, unless you decide otherwise, are the same hours of operation that you changed the hours to for 2014.
Right, okay. So these are the current.
Correct.
And they were changed in 2014?
Right.
And we had, did have a question about holiday operation.
I forget, do you, Vaughn, how, how were they changed? I forget, they were reduced, right?
Yeah, the hours were reduced, Joe.
What was it during the day?
Well, I used to write on the license 6:00 a.m. to 9:59 p.m. just to cover myself in case I had a tow truck or something coming in late or leaving early.
Right.
But then they changed to 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
I think that's because there were apparently a lot of activity there in regards as.
That comes in history.
Well, yes, or.
Are you open on Christmas, Thanksgiving, New Year's Day?
No. Or July 4th.
Or July 4th.
Memorial Day or Labor Day.
You want to put that in the license?
Yeah, as long as it didn't, didn't hurt him, stick that in there now.
It doesn't make any difference.
So what holidays, you have?
Here, here, he can take this, this is scrap paper.
Do you want federal, state?
Agenda.
Well, I mean, no, I'll put it on the agenda, it's going to have it actually.
Okay.
Okay, so we were talking about.
What are the federal holidays?
I can give you the towns' holidays.
Well, I was going to start with the days he isn't operating at this point.
Sure, that's a good place to start. New Year's Day.
Okay.
Mary, there's chewing gum on my wheel. Now it's on my shoe.
Memorial Day.
Memorial Day.
July 4th. Labor Day. Thanksgiving.
Did you bring it from your bag?
Labor Day.
Memorial Day is off.
It's on the wheel.
Thanksgiving. Open on Christmas for somebody who wants to, you know, buy an old car, a last-minute present?
Christmas and New Year's, yeah.
Valentine's Day?
It was pretty much, yeah. Pretty much all of it, except Patriot's Day and stuff, that's not really that.
Oh, what other holidays?
Yep.
Starting with Columbus.
Veterans Day.
Well, I think it's probably reasonable to put at least those.
Yeah.
Six days. And the other ones are more semi, you know, holidays commercially, so.
Martin Luther King?
Yeah, no, I, I recognize, there's Martin Luther King Day, there's President's Day, Patriot's Day being a state holiday, Columbus Day, and Veterans Day are the ones that are also certainly, they're town governmental holidays.
Veterans Day is a pretty, what, what date is that?
That's November 11th, always.
Oh, yeah. You open on that day, Vaughn?
Uh-huh.
Veterans are getting a lot of attention lately, but not getting enough attention. But that's all right, start with those over there.
Labor Day? Can we put them?
We got, I have, I'll read them. New Year's Day, Memorial Day, Fourth of July, Labor Day, Thanksgiving, and Christmas. There's six of them.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And those are certainly the major.
Yep.
Holidays, all right? Do you have a problem with adding that? Okay?
Well.
All right. Is there anything else? And this is with respect to the motor vehicle license.
So when the other one comes up, you'd want them to be the same?
Yeah, the junk dealer.
I, I mean, it's certainly as far as holidays.
Yes.
And I believe there's something on that on the license that makes it pertain to the stipulations on that license.
Mm-hmm. But one could, one could, when one did the junk dealer's license, still had stipulations that were consistent with that. For instance, if we wanted it done in a particular area, or we wanted more shielding in connection with this. So it doesn't, I mean, it has to correlate, obviously, in terms of some of these big things, but it can also have its own provisions that are relevant to it. Okay?
No, I don't have a problem with that.
All right. You guys have anything you want to say?
No, I, for the record, the name is Carl Gross, I represent the Thompsons in Berlin. We're just here to renew an existing license and certainly work as good neighbors in the community, try and run an operation that's as least intrusive as we can. We think it's a good idea to identify the holidays we're thinking of and discussing so that there's no confusion, so.
Yep.
I think that's a good reflection on the record.
Okay. And, and what does that stipulation mean? Continue fence running perpendicular to road.
My father was a little slow putting the fence up on the front, but I, I fenced the whole thing off.
So that's done, all right.
Four, five years ago.
Okay.
Done.
All right.
Whatever, the time flies, maybe eight years ago.
I mean, I think it had to do with the continued installation of the fence, so it's probably a stipulation that.
It's old one.
It's outdated, but nonetheless, the fence is in existence. It's going to continue to be there at that location, so.
Yeah, and I mean, we do an annual inspection, if a piece of the fence breaks down, you know we're going to have to put it back up and that sort of stuff, so. Okay?
I'm going to type on that, that there's cross-reference to the junk. It may not be on there, but that's what it has historically been.
Well, just to be clear, this, right, this license does not reflect the connection with the.
Yeah, I think you can just leave it the way it is.
The stipulations, and then on the other one, it's called the regulations. They had referred to one another on the face of the license before, in the past. Not as one of the listed.
Well, this says here that all of the junk license shall also apply to this one.
Oh, that's it, okay, it's in there.
It's this one.
I thought it was.
That refers to this one, not this one that refers to that one.
Gotcha, okay. Yes, that will.
So we will, and that's already there, I mean. Okay? All right, any other questions, comments?
I will.
From the public. Okay. Any, I will then accept a, a motion to renew the motor vehicle junk license, Class III. This license that we are issuing tonight will expire on January 1st of 2016, so people understand the period that we're operating for.
I move that we renew it with the addition of those holidays we just agreed on.
I second that motion.
Okay. Any further questions, discussions, comments, all right? Hearing none, I'll take a vote. All those in favor of issuing the license with the additions indicated in the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. There we go.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
You too. And you guys want to come up?
Sure.
Those D730 here.
Hi, how are you doing?
Good, thanks, how are you?
All right. Well, anyway, yeah, this, I actually just put this to counsel and asked, you know, him to go to DHCD on this, to see if this is consistent with their, with their standards. I have to say, I was a little bit, I am a little bit concerned with it. Because, you know, foreclosure being a way, you know, a way out of this. So we, you know, we'll, we'll see what the review is. But I, I would, personally, I would not support anything that didn't meet the most stringent DHCD provisions on this. And my understanding was that they actually, you know, weren't accepting a release for foreclosure, and this seems to suggest that they would if somebody makes an affirmative economic case. So that's, you know, that's where we are. I suspect that, I'll have that review done by next week, and we're going to see Joel next week, so that's, you know, that's kind of an end point on that, on that review.
I did speak with Toni Hall at DHCD, who has worked a lot with Berlin.
Mm-hmm.
She did describe that as boilerplate. She didn't say that changes were not possible. This is a version of this that has sort of evolved as different projects have come through the pipeline. But she also stressed to me that this is the redline version for a purpose. And I think she was opening the door to possible modifications of that. I think there are two constraints here. One would be our lenders, who would finance the 84-unit apartment program, and the other would be DHCD. Our interests and DHCD are actually quite aligned. They don't want to lose the units, and the town doesn't want to lose the units.
Mm-hmm.
It's a question of what lender who's going to extend the construction loan on the 84 units and maybe it rolls into a permanent mortgage, and, and they're the ones that are worried that they might take the project back. So we have to be careful to find, if, if we modify it at all, I mean, this, this is there because it works with the banks. So DHCD is kind of realistic about that.
Yep.
If it can be tightened without knocking us out of the, of the box with lenders, I think, let's try, and I think there's an openness there. The other thing I'll say, though, is that this is rental. And I really think the Affordable Housing Program on for-sale product works far less well. Just generally, the town only gets credit for 25% of the units. With apartments, you get credit for 100% because apartments are already less expensive. And then if you dedicate 25% of the portable, the state gives you a bonus of the other 75%. I did some analysis, the, the business model for this apartment program, what's, the 84 units will be owned by a separate entity than the other 120 units dwellings, which can be condos or apartments.
Will it be subject to a separate mortgage?
It would be separate lot, separate entity, and separate deed restrictions. These can never be converted to condominiums, so this project will always be.
Unless they're foreclosed.
I don't think, even in a foreclosure, the deed restriction relative to staying a rental program could be lifted. I think what this provision says is, if a buyer from our bank bought the 84 apartments, could make a case to both the town and DHCD that it is financially.
No, no, stop right there, no. It is in their reasonable discretion after consultation. It is in their reasonable discretion after consultation with DHCD and the municipality. You're a lawyer, too. You know that consultation is not, it does not give us any kind of veto.
No, I agree.
They have the keys completely in their pocket on doing it. They have to come talk to us, but if they talk to us...
Well, they have to make a case that the project is no longer financially feasible with the affordability component. And I think that's much harder.
But they have to make it effectively to themselves. Because it says financial infeasibility should be determined by the senior mortgage holder in its reasonable discretion after consultation with the municipality and DHCD. So they have to make the case to themselves.
Yeah, you're right, you're right. That language is not good. I mean, I think what it was originally supposed to be is you can remove these restrictions if you, if you just can't run the project in a way that's financially feasible. But Tony Hall told me today that they've never seen restrictions lifted on a rental project. And I think the only ones where the state and Berlin have seen an attempt to lift the restrictions is a for-sale unit, and when the market simply won't express any interest in a for-sale unit.
Yeah, no, and it was a, it was a completely different provision. The provision there said if they were foreclosed, the deed, the deed restriction did not attach to the acquisition of title in foreclosure. So that's, that was absolutely...
Worse like, even worse than this.
Even worse than this, absolutely.
Right.
So that's what we were dealing with there. No determination, no, you know, no infeasibility, it's just gone if you foreclose. Yep.
No, we don't have to...
And that is not this, but...
Now, we might be able to strengthen this, and I think Tony Hall would welcome a discussion about that. But what I'm saying is, as I look at these eighty-four units as a rental property, you know, they gross about a million eight in gross rental revenues without any affordability, and about a million six fifty because of these 21 affordable units. That's a drop of about 9% in revenues. I don't know if a buyer from a bank who's buying this eighty-four unit apartment project is going to be able to make a colorable case that there's no way these apartments can still be owned and operated at a profit unless I get rid of these 21 affordable units. So, I mean, I agree with you on the fact that the way it reads, it looks like it's a discussion with themselves. And maybe we should...
And absolutely, there has to be consultation. They do have to create a public record, and that, that's all so much better than the other situation. I don't, yeah, I don't want to pass over that. But it, you know, it...
Let's see if we can strengthen it.
The other thing is, as I read this, is that to the extent that they prove, to themselves, whatever, but to the extent that this is commercially infeasible, then all the rights and restrictions under this go away. And the way I'm reading it, these could become condos then. That's, I mean, that's, well, because, and again, I'm happy to be corrected on this, but when I read it, it says...
The rights and restrictions you can, shall not apply to such mortgage holder upon such...
Yeah.
So you think even the deed rider, I mean, is the deed rider different from the regulatory agreement?
I believe that the two are, you know, that this would extinguish that. Because otherwise, this would be useless to the, to the bank.
Well, I think the bank is getting much more protection than they need if they have the right to buy it, sell it in foreclosure, and then their buyer can turn it into a condominium.
Again, you know, just, well, because, as I say, if, first of all, if the deed rider attaches, and attaches regardless of what happens in the regulatory agreements or this finding, then it's no protection to the bank at all, because they, they're still bound by the deed restriction. Right?
Well, I didn't know if there were separate restrictions. One, just saying this can never be a condominium. And the other saying it has to remain in compliance with DHCD's regulations. We've always looked at this as this has to be rental. But you're making, all of your points are good ones.
Yeah, and I, I mean, again, I looked at this over the week, and Thanksgiving was in between and everything like that, so, you know, I may be misreading something here, but I read enough that I was concerned with it.
You're not, and Tony was very good. She returned my call, and she knew I had this meeting tonight, and she made a point to get back to me. And the last part of our conversation was, well, this is redlined for a reason. So I think there's openness, but I think together we have to be careful that we don't make it so tight that Matt and I can't get a...
And I understand that, too.
I would think it's to DHCD's benefit, too, to make sure that they can't do this.
It is.
You know?
They don't want to lose these subsidized housing units any more than the town does. So I think the developer, DHCD, and the town are trying to make sure nothing goes wrong here, because the town is getting credit for eighty-four units.
Yeah.
The bank, who lends money, is going to be looking at this very carefully. And we, we're not at the point. We do have a term sheet from a bank called Enterprise Bank that has given us a sort of, not a commitment letter, but a term sheet on a loan for all of the dwellings at Enterprise. But we haven't reached a point with them where we could say, would you take a look at this language and see? See what might work.
Yeah.
I'm glad you started this now.
Yeah, I mean, I think we probably need to have, you know, further conversation. I mean, other things I've seen in these agreements, and one of the things that I've seen in the past is the restrictions are only lifted, you know, to the extent required for them to recover, you know, principal and, you know, accrued interest, and if they, you know...
But if it gets healthy, it should go fast, they should come back online.
Well, I guess my point, you know, my point would be that, and trying to think how, you know, the other thing is trying to think how this works, you know, with rental property. If you're talking about two or three individual units for sale, it's much more easy to benchmark. It's that, you know what, the restriction is lifted, and you can do this or that, but only to the extent required to recover your, you know, principal amount, you know, and accrued, and accrued interest. So, you know, this basically says, you know, you can lift the restrictions if it's infeasible to operate it under the model, but there's no, you know, there's no sort of reference back to what, you know, what's really the protected amount. So that's, you know, that might be another thing to look at, because that at least answers the more vigorous question that they get. The principal back, accrued interest, but, you know, one is not giving them the opportunity to lift these restrictions with respect to the whole thing, simply because they demonstrate that the thing can't operate in the particular configuration.
So we may be able to prove that, because maybe we can make the deed restriction that requires that this remain rental separate from...
Yeah, so let's look at that, yeah.
And then maybe we can also put in a get healthy provision, which means if someone buys it from the bank, and they have to operate it without the affordable units for a period of four or five years to get healthy, and then they've gotten the project back on its feet, then maybe the affordable units should come back.
Or even, you know, conceivably that, you know, if, if, you know, a third of them are empty, and they can't, you know, they can't rent them except to, you know, to market, sort of affordable, ineligible parties that, you know, maybe it would only apply to half if that was required to, you know, to improve the cash flow. That's, that was the sort of approach that I was suggesting. Again, it's harder to sort of sit here and imagine it in a rental setting than it is if you were, if you were selling, you know, two or three...
They did put language in about partway, cutting back partway. The problem for the town is that we need all 21 to stay SHI.
That's right.
Because that's what gets us the eighty-four.
That's right.
So we don't really want them to be able to say, well, we'll pull a few units out and make the market.
No, no, that's sort of a two-edged sword. But anyway, I mean, I thought, I'm going to talk to Joel, and I understand that we're, you know, we're balancing your ability to get financing on this with our ability to maintain.
And we could take it up with our lender, I mean, with our possible lender. I don't know if they will be, but we could, we could...
And what was the source of this language?
DHCD.
DHCD actually gave this to us?
Yes, yes. This has become their boilerplate, which is why I told...
Have they changed it in other towns? Have they tweaked it in different towns for different projects?
I don't know. But what the term Tony Hall used with me today is, well, this is kind of boilerplate, but it is redlined at this point, and if you have some suggestions, I think they're open to it. You know, it may be with rental affordable housing, we could suggest some language that would become used in some other communities if it makes sense.
All right. Okay.
And I think timing-wise, we're fine.
Okay.
Tony said they'd like to give us our permission on these units by the end of December, but if that slips into January, we're not going to start these until the spring, anyway. So we have time to get the best thinking put into it.
Yeah.
And I think they're open.
And when I chatted with Joel, his 40B specialist was away last week, so I was sort of left just to read it myself.
Well, will he be here next Monday?
Joel will be here next Monday, and I'm expecting to talk to Joel and his specialist about this between now and then.
You want to see Christopher here next Monday?
Hmm?
Would you like us to hear?
No, no, we have special town meeting. All I was saying was, I know, I've asked Joel, you know, to attend to this quickly, and I said that we sort of have a stop loss position, because we know we're going to see Joel next Monday, and he knows that I'm going to rattle this cage about this, so, okay?
Okay, well, we're okay on time. It takes us a few weeks to work up some language that DHCD will consider.
Let me see what, yeah, let me see what, because Coleman and Page have a 40B specialist, you know, see if he's dealt with this sort of thing.
It may be a topic that Tony Hall and others at DHCD are having at various towns.
And, you know, Coleman represents a lot of towns, and this guy does 40B stuff in a lot of towns, including some rentals, so he may have some ideas, or he may say, you know what, you can't do better than this because they can't get funding.
Can't get the funding for it, yeah.
You know, so, but I did, it, there was enough in there that, you know, I was...
Yeah, I've been struggling with it, too.
dismayed and a little bit concerned about it, yeah.
I've been struggling with it.
Okay.
I think there's openness all the way around, so we might be able to sharpen it.
Okay.
All right.
Splendid, thank you for coming in, thanks for taking the time.
See you guys next Monday?
Yeah. Yes, indeed. You again, we'll say, right? Thank you.
Mary, the liquor store sent a check out today, so I'll come by maybe Wednesday to pick up whatever paper I'm supposed to, if you had a chance to process.
They'll need to sign it next Monday.
Oh, then I'll come by next Wednesday, a week from Wednesday.
That'll work.
That'll work, because we have till the end of the year.
We have to talk about, I'm sure they're going to have a little meeting before town meeting next week. Probably next.
You can handle that with me or without?
They need to sign, you've signed everything I need, and I have everything, that's correct.
You call me or text me if you need anything, I mean.
I'll let you and Lynn know.
That's unfair.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, alrighty. And as I say, I was a little concerned about the language, because they basically have to prove it to themselves after consultation with us, and I love a different, a little stronger than that, anyway. Okay, did we want to say anything more about the 1870 Town Hall?
No.
Okay. Then the other thing is that we have the FinCom question. And I think your drafts look good, sorry.
Okay, and did you see Larry's add-on comments there?
Mm-hmm.
Not, not that, but the second chunked up, green, orange category, that's Larry's.
Yeah, I would forward that along, too. Yeah, just forward the whole thing.
Okay.
Yeah. And invite them, if they would like to call me, you can...
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. They're meeting right before town meeting, so...
Yeah, good. All right. Ah, yes, and I forgot to, I forgot to bring this in. I will email you tomorrow. I did have some suggested...
You don't want to do that next Monday, or do you? Before the special town meeting, you don't want to put that out two weeks?
This is Larry's.
Yep.
I, what I will do is I will put, I will circulate the language tomorrow.
Okay.
And we can take it from there, okay?
Okay.
All right. Comm buys, presentation, any follow-up actions?
So there was a presentation by, I don't know, what group are they from? Not the AG?
OSD, Operational Services Division of the State.
OSD, about comm buys, which is a buying program...
A blue hole folder, Tom, if you want to hand that to Judy.
Right.
It's the state contracts made available, and other vendors, they're all out there, and you can go out and look at them and get prices, and... And you can put your needs out there, and people can give you bids on them. So they did a presentation, and the next step would be for us to express interest in it. And we'd have to decide on what type of format we would like set up. Typically, they have a person who's like the administrator, who then creates accounts for whoever they feel should have their own comm buy account. So the town needs someone who's going to be the administrator of it, and then you can make accounts for each of the separate people who'll be buying or looking for proposals off it. Which brings up the whole, the whole thing brought up the whole point of procurement. Because we, Mary looked up the law, we need to have, by state law, a chief procurement officer, which we currently don't have.
Every town, no matter how small?
That's what it says. And right now, each department kind of, you know, buys their own paper, buys their own pens. We could probably save money if we, if we bought in bulk.
Yeah. And the amount of money we pay for a procurement officer would be more than we save in buying pens in bulk, probably, but if the law is the law.
Well, if you wanted someone who's certified, they have to take courses in Boston. It's $450 a course, and they're three days, and...
And this is, but this is only for the use of the request for proposals process?
No, I don't think so. A local jurisdiction that wishes to use Chapter 30, 30B, request for proposal process to procure supplies or services has to appoint a CPL. Now, you don't have to be certified.
I understand that, but this says to, not, this says to use the request for proposals process.
Which we have to use for anything over $35,000. So...
You've done it for the elevator, you've done it for the public safety study, you've done it for, you'll be doing it for the town barn, I suppose, at some point.
You'll be doing it for the, oh, we already did it for the architect. Yeah, I mean, you can't really get around not doing RFPs.
Final auto truck, I guess.
Well, we've been the procurement board, right?
Well...
On big stuff.
But what does that mean to you? If it's over $35,000, you have to go out and write up an RFP and put it in the central register.
Right.
But we don't have anybody... But we don't have anybody who actually really has been trained in this.
You mean writing up the proposals?
Well, I've been putting the stuff out on the central register. But if you wanted to use the comm buy, then you really need to have somebody who's kind of the central purchasing point.
Wonder how many hours a week that will take?
Well, I mean, you could have somebody who you pay part-time, you know. Unless there's somebody, well, we've, we've, yeah, I mean, you could look for, to share somebody, but unless you're going out and doing bidding, how often do people buy stuff? So maybe you have somebody who.
Keith buys paid-in materials and sand and salt and bulk.
Right, but I mean, in terms of.
Fuel.
Well, sealed bidding procedures are not what they're talking about here.
Okay, just answer your question.
Where's the, where's the buy, where's the chart? Didn't you have it printed up? Is it that one?
It's changed, so I didn't print up the fresh one, but.
Well, it's the same thing, only it's $10,000 more. But that, isn't, is that?
What are you watching?
It's just the chart that shows when you have to RFP.
I used to have it here. Keith took it down a couple of times, I'm with him, and then, so I can print it out on.
The highway department has always done, and apparently still does, a very good job at purchasing, getting good bids, and doing everything legally. They're, they're probably the department that purchases the most materials and services and equipment.
Well, he needs a refresher course on procurement.
Just seven pages.
I just want the chart. You know what I'm talking about?
So.
Supplies or services.
That's as of July.
So, supplies and services. Now, you still need someone who's gonna be doing public building projects. Construction material procurement is different. That's all the sealed bids that Thomas was talking about, and public works, non-building construction. So if it's over $34,999, you need sealed bids or proposals. That's the 30B law. So that's what we're talking about. If it's under that, you just need three written or oral quotes. And if it's under 10, then sound business practices.
But for like the rescue collections, the procurement officer would give the towns answer on how you could have proceeded on that, whether it was a percentage of the amount to be recovered, whether it was a flat fee, whether that even needed to go out to be.
All right, I'd like to defer this, because I wanna read through 30B. I'm not 100% sure I'm finding everything I'm selling here.
There's a large 60-page manual I could bring to Monday night's meeting.
No, I, I prefer to read the law first, and then we'll see, okay?
Want to move it off for a couple of weeks, or?
Put it off for a couple of weeks, yeah. Okay? All right. Next, discussion regarding town council response on the Reese trust land issues. Have people read this?
Yeah, I did. Diane seems to think, under chapter 61, you couldn't, that would be too active to be, be.
Fall under the definition of a 61A.
That's what Joel says, that in his opinion, the offer's not a bona fide offer.
Wouldn't they just take it out of chapter when they buy it, when they buy it back? I mean, they can take it out of chapter land, right?
I guess that's the part I didn't understand. Why would they keep it in 61?
Right.
Pay off the taxes.
They would have to pay off the taxes.
Yeah, and then they could, they.
And then they could do.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
But the other issue was a bona fide offer. Is it, or isn't it a bona fide offer?
It's his, I didn't think it was, and he doesn't think it is.
Okay. Then maybe we should notify Reese's.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's going on quite a while.
I think we should say that we don't view it as a bona fide offer. Right?
That's what council says. I mean, I.
No, I mean, council says, in his opinion, the offer's not a bona fide offer because of the contingency language in the rider A clause 16, in particular, the language toward the end of the first paragraph stating, the buyer may terminate the agreement if the buyer is unable to obtain any necessary approvals, contains a clear contingency. It makes the offer explicitly contingent on receiving town as well as state and federal approvals for the proposed soccer use. If the town isn't interested in the property, we may ignore the infirmity and allow the proposed sale to proceed.
I did send a brief email around about that, that, the idea that we're just not interested in, isn't quite accurate.
That, that little piece there, can you read it in there? That's Walter's.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not interested in it. I actually think putting a soccer field in there would be good for the Reese development stuff. We still have line of sight. It's not like you're putting in houses, which would be.
No, it's better than houses, no doubt about it. I wouldn't, I don't think, the only interest I would have in it is if it somehow made the Tyler farm, protecting that and turning it into something of a function hall or something which depended on that. That's the only reason I thought it might be interested.
We can punt this and keep our options open, because in fact, it's not a bona fide offer. And if we tell them it's not a bona fide offer, and we will do the 61A review of the situation when the contingency is removed, I don't see any problem with that.
I don't either. I think we should. Time is going on, and maybe they'll turn around and make it a bona fide offer, and then, then we start the clock again.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think you just need to tell them something.
Yeah, okay, I would, I'd accept a motion to inform them that we have reviewed the offer and we do not find it a bona fide offer under 61A. And therefore, there's no running of our rights, first refusal, et cetera, and that we will review the issue promptly when there is a bona fide offer without contingency.
I would so move.
Second.
Okay, all right. Okay, any further comments, questions, discussions?
Yeah, just clarify. I mean, Judy's concern is right. I mean, I don't think the town should be in a business of buying it if the soccer field's going in and that was it, particularly if the Tyler farm was, you know, going to be partially raised and totally changed. But if it was that field and growing of crops and for a craft brewery and a convention center or something that depended on that, then we should probably see, if the state could come up with some agricultural monies, and we could save that. But that's the only reason. That, that's a very small, un, you know, likelihood that that would happen. But I just don't wanna say we're not interested.
Well, this buys time for that, and I think it buys it in a very bona fide way because it's not, you know, it's really not a bona fide offer.
Right.
So, all right. Any other questions or discussions?
Yep.
Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of issuing responses outlined in the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Somebody prepare a letter for Judy's signature, or do you wanna review a letter that I draft?
I'd be happy to review it.
Okay.
And do you want to sign it? Do you want me to sign it, Judy?
Doesn't make any difference to me.
All right, if you send me the text, I'll review it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if you'd like me to sign, I could sign it sometime during the day on Wednesday. I'm working with my mom on Wednesday. Before we move to miscellaneous correspondence, I just, I wanna remind people that we have our second mandatory mediation before the federal judge magistrate in the Johnston matter on Friday.
You do. You're going to that?
Yes, I'm using the, the Imperial We. We being the town, yes, me representing us.
Okay.
Yeah. I love to take vacation days to go to court, you know? But, there you have it. I have a bustin's holiday for a lawyer, isn't it? Okay, yeah, really. All right, with that reminder, any other new business to come before?
I, I would like to discuss.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
I as new business. So.
You'd like I?
I. Not I as in I myself or my eye, but letter I.
Okay.
So, the fire chiefs, the, the fire chief's been having all these issues going on with PAMET, which is the system.
I saw the email that was sent back in today. I didn't know he'd taken up knitting.
So what I would like is for the board to vote to allow him to spend money to get this fixed and have it be paid out of the data systems budget. And if the data systems budget goes over budget, that they will then request a reserve fund transfer. Because it doesn't make sense to have these separate things in their budgets. I mean, it's, it's still part of the town's data systems. And we've already seen what happened before, where now we have unpaid bills that are being paid at this special town meeting. You know, if it's not working, it needs to get fixed. It's not like it's something you can put off.
Isn't our ID, IT person supposed to be working, dealing with that?
Our IT person has decided that, that is not in his budget, and he's not gonna pay for it.
Well, first of all, it has to be fixed, right?
Yes.
Yep.
But all I'm asking to do is that.
Are there alternatives to what you suggested? Is that the only, the best way to do it?
Well, it seems to me that if we're going to consolidate IT, which I think is what we're looking at for next fiscal year, that you should have a handle on what all your costs are, and they should probably be in one budget. Now, the IT person says that he doesn't do that piece, he only does the police, not the fire. But that doesn't make any sense to me. Why would one group be included and another group?
Is it a different system?
No, it's still PAMET.
Okay. And what, do we have a sense for what is wrong except it's not working?
The network, maybe, or the server? I, I mean, the last email I read earlier, which wasn't the knitting one.
Oh, that's also from today. He and June could not see the server. I've had email problems where my computer can't see the server too. It knocked June out for a good part of the morning.
Repairs to the functioning of PAMET on the workstations. Couldn't do permit processing, nearly impossible to, and they couldn't do any financial reports. They print Berlin Police Department on the head, and, um, let's see. So.
And, and just the our quote-unquote IT person, who are we talking about when we're talking about that?
Richard.
Okay. I didn't know whether we were talking about the actual people doing the work, or Richard, or what. Is the police on a separate budget?
The police are included in his budget, in, in the IT budget. And they have all brightly, and the fire chief is not included with brightly. And that's where we ended up with these unpaid bills, where he said that, that, that he wouldn't pay them because Bruce should have that in his budget.
All right. Okay, do you, do you, were you making a motion?
I was making a motion that we.
Could, could I just interrupt you a minute? I, I mean, I, this is the first time I've been hit with, and you're probably right. Couple, two, three times, I've just gone along and voted because it seems so logical here, only to a few days later, get another point of view or something. Could we put it off a week?
Sure. I mean, I haven't talked to Bruce about this, but it, it seems to me that we shouldn't, it shouldn't be that one, that you pay for one group and you don't pay for the other group.
That's.
Kind of uneven. And both groups are public safety, and both groups.
Report up to us.
Report up to us. In fact, the IT director reports to us.
Right.
So that's the crux of the issue, is where the funding's gonna come from and how it's paid for.
Right.
The technical aspects of it, who determines how to fix that?
Well, the current system is they're supposed to call Onsite, who will then determine who to call.
Yeah. All right, I, I can understand that. That's, seems reasonable.
I mean, in either case, we could just tell Bruce that, give, tell Bruce to spend it out of his budget and write a letter to the FinCom and explain that he's gonna, you know, go over his budget because we've given him permission to.
And it's absolutely necessary that he deal with this?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
If you can't do your permitting.
And Mary, you, how are your problems related to the fire department's problems?
I don't know, because I'm not an IT person.
It might be the same problem, she said, because they couldn't see.
The server.
The server.
I wasn't impacted as greatly as June. June was a good part of the day on a Monday.
So we fixed yours out of our budget, maybe the fire department would get fixed too. No, I, I think we should go ahead and get it done. Somebody look at it.
Okay, so your motion is?
Uh, that, well, I think we should have it taken out of the data systems budget personally, that we.
Make the motion?
Make a motion that we direct the fire chief to get his, well, I'll go down and talk to him, that he can spend money to have brightly or Onsite come in and figure out what his problem is, and that money will be paid for out of the data systems expense budget.
I'll second that motion, okay? Any further questions or discussion?
I also think we should send a letter to the finance committee and tell them that they might be getting a reserve fund transfer request from the data systems coordinator because of this issue. Covers both ends of it.
I, I, I just have no idea how much left, we have left in the budget, or?
No, I don't either. But we can wait.
I, I, let's see how much it is, and yes, if it looks like, I mean, I, I would do that if it looks like we're gonna actually overspend, but I don't know that at this point. Okay?
Yep.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right. Hearing none, I'll accept a vote. All those in favor of the motions presented, say aye.
Aye.
Anything else? I have one other thing that I forgot to mention. We had talked about doing our session this Saturday, or?
And it got moved to the 13th.
And it got moved to the 13th.
Okay, I saw that. Mary, Mary sent me a.
Okay. I just, 'cause I thought I saw something today that still had it on the. Okay, I just, because I thought I saw something today that still had it on the 6th.
Are you making breakfast?
I'm, I'm making breakfast and I'm making soup for the dinner, and I was hoping to have a little time that Saturday in between, in between the two, so that, that, I appreciate very much moving into the next Saturday. All right?
Yep, is that 9:00 AM?
Yeah, 9:00 AM works for me.
On the 13th.
On the 13th.
Okay?
Yep.
All right.
You do want to have a meeting next Monday at 7:00, before the 7:30 special time?
Yes, that's usually what we do.
Okay.
Yeah, because we have to sign warrants and stuff like that, so. Okay. All right, if there is nothing else, then.
Are, are you taking action or on making recommendations, or you're not going to be making recommendations on the articles?
No, I don't see, I don't have any strong feeling to make any recommendation. We're not compelled to make any recommendation, and we generally don't, even at, even at town meeting, I mean, we rarely take a motion as a board to recommend or not, so. Each of us is free to get up and say what they will about any particular article.
Yep, oh, um.
We're trying to make, recommend, not to make recommendations, because nobody listens to Slackman anyways.
The $5,000 check arrived for this, to cover the cost.
Oh, good, good, good. Excellent, all right, then.
I move you adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at 8:12.